There's something that has protectors those guys coming back in. Want to see what we can move the election officers to the end, right?
Uh, Mark wants to do it first thing.
Okay.
What are you doing? Good.
He told me that today.
It's gonna be interesting appeals tonight.
I like it. Gonna keep us engaged, feel something different.
There's gotta be something to do with protectors. You know how you have protectors back from the normal.
Hi Rick. How's it going? Good.
Hope that it embarrassed, don't think too bad.
Oh, it's awful.
Good, good. Glad to hear it.
You have election, oh, I'm sorry, stand for pledge allegiance? Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. It's time for election of officers, so, uh... Who approved the minutes of December thirteenth, do you have a motion?
Officer, please present it. Second.
Discussion. Seen on all favor? That unanimous, thank you. And now, election of officers, so, uh, it's time for the vice chair and chair to be elected. And anybody that is a voting member can actually be nominated themselves or be nominated. So, if you have any suggestions or requests?
I'd like to nominate Mr. Boisel for chair.
If I could speak to that nomination. As discussed last meeting, it's not my preference to be chair, so I would like to just reconsider. Because of my work, amount of time I have to dedicate to that, I can't be here a lot of times, and I will have international travel, which I can't control. So, my preference would be not to be chair, so just please consider that.
Okay.
Thank you. I do appreciate the nomination, but...
I'd like to offer my nomination up. Are you interested in being up chair?
I would nominate you, but...
No, I'd nominate you. I'm not going to be chair this year.
Yeah. No, I'm not going anywhere.
Okay, so, I have a nomination, so I have second?
Wait, you nominated Lee Ray?
Yeah.
Second.
Discussion on that? All in favor? Uh, unanimous, except for a distinction from Lee Ray. And now, vice chair, do we have a motion for vice chair?
James, would you have interest?
I do have interest.
Right, nominate James.
All in favor? A generous, very much, I'll cede my seat to, uh...
I think you should do this meeting, Mr. Chair. This should be your meeting.
Mr. Chair, does he have to sit next to me?
I'd like to proceed on appeal number two-six-two-four, limited reduction of yard size by Thomas and Michelle Malander, six Pearl Street, assessors map U-two parcel eighty-one. Who do we have presenting today?
I thought we were going to deal with those first two items together.
This one and this one, yeah.
Okay, so we're doing twenty-six-twenty-five? Eliminated reduction of yard size by Dominic Fortier, eight Morning Street, assessors map U-two parcel one-twenty-five, and appeal twenty-six-twenty-one, administrative appeal request by Joseph and Candace. We're not doing that right now?
Just these two.
Okay. I apologize.
So that's based on the...
Okay.
We're re-adopting what was approved.
Okay. Now, do we need to go any further than that?
We do not.
Does anybody have any questions, or we'll be just re-adopting as they originally?
I agree with that.
I do as well.
Anybody else?
Did you say move to approve?
Second.
All in favor?
Synonymous?
I need to get signatures, though.
Okay.
You can go ahead now.
Okay, so, appeal number twenty-six-twenty-one, administrative appeal request by Joseph Candace Satlack, eight-two East Grand Avenue for building permit two-oh-one-seven-oh-nine-five-five for East Grand Avenue, assessors map U-twenty-two parcel one-twelve. Everybody present? Please take the podium. Please state your name and...
Hi, welcome. My name is Jeff Jones. I'm attorney Joe Warren, here at Scarborough. And I represent the county of Kansas and South Lake. And they live at two East Grand Avenue. And this regarding the field administrative appeal of the decision by the code enforcement officer regarding property to stay abut four East Grand Avenue. And as you know from your materials, that's in our core hate zone. And we're appealing the decision by the code enforcement officer, which basically granted a building permit for a two-story accessory unit structure, a new structure, uh, within sixteen feet of the front lot line. And basically, the code enforcement decision, code enforcement officer's decision was was that this building, because it was grandfathered non-conforming lot, did not have to be set back thirty feet as required in this, in this zone. And our core zone is basically a thirty-foot front lot line setback and fifteen feet rear and side setbacks. So, basically, if you look at our argument, and I submitted a letter with our argument as well as pictures and an affidavit from my client, and I hope, and I want those to be made part of the record, please. But basically, the Scarborough zoning ordinance states that all new structures must conform with the ordinance. And we're not, and this is a non-conforming lot, which already has a building, a principal structure on it. So this is the applicant who are trying to build a new two-story structure, which we claim is within the building envelope, and, um, and the building permission not to be issued. And the code enforcement officer's argument is under section two-D-one-B. That states that no lot other than one that's been created after two thousand and three shall be built upon unless there is access to the lot. And we don't disagree that this is a grandfathered lot. And therefore, and it's a non-conforming lot, therefore, it could be built upon. What we're saying is, so we don't disagree with that interpretation, but, but he's expanded that way past that to, to that, to state basically, not only is there, is there, is this grandfathered, but any new building doesn't have to have a front yard setback of thirty feet. And so, he allowed an issue to building permit even though this new structure only had a front line setback of sixteen feet in its closest place. This, this lot is behind my client's house. There's a ten-foot right-of-way that leads up to this house, the applicant's house, and that's basically the front lot line. That's where the right-of-way and the access to this lot hits the lot. And, um, and that's, that's where the people drive in. This is also a, a ten-foot right-of-way that is shared with my client. So they both use the same exact ten-foot right-of-way to access that property, lot east, east Grand Avenue. So, we don't disagree that a building could be built on a non-conforming lot, but the zoning ordinance still applies that all buildings need to conform with the zoning ordinance, which is, it has to have a front setback, side setbacks, and a rear setback. And, but because the code enforcement officer issued a building permit showing only a sixteen-foot setback for this new two-story structure, we think that was an error. The main street corner has, there's no, there's no, um, there's no section in the ordinance that says that actually deals with what we're talking about tonight. So you have to interpret this, um, as a town attorney, as indicated to you in a memo, is you have to interpret this, there is the ordinance, so not to create an absurd or illogical or inconsistent result. The whole purpose of zoning is to eliminate non-conforming uses and to reduce non-conformity. And in this case, what's happened is, is you have a non-conforming lot, which actually has a bid, under the code enforcement's decision, has a larger building envelope than a, than a conforming lot, which is, which is right next door. And that goes against the whole purpose of zoning. So, by the code enforcement's decision, he's created, because it's not required this lot to have any front lot setback, he's created a bigger building envelope for a severely non-conforming lot. It's non-conforming in size, it's non-conforming in access, it's non-conforming, it doesn't have street frontage. This is a non-conforming lot, which already has a building and a house on it. And he's allowing another structure on the property only sixteen feet from the front lot line. And we think that's an error. That, that, for that to happen, it needs to come before the, the sport to do that. There's also an inconsistent result because of the code enforcement officer's interpretation. Because under this zone, the side and rear setbacks are the same, they're all fifteen feet. So his decision basically is, well, it doesn't matter if I find it to be a side setback or rear setback, they're all fifteen feet. But in order to determine a rear setback, you have to know what the front lot line is. You can't determine a side setback until you actually determine the front lot line. And, and the code enforcement's decision is, this, this, this lot is non-conforming, doesn't have a front lot line. It doesn't exist on this lot, which we think is an error. That every lot has to be determined to have a front lot line, because you can't determine the side setbacks or the rear setbacks unless you do that. And if you, in a Higgins Beach zone, where you have a rear setback of thirty feet and a front of eighteen and a side of only eight feet, well, that, that would be critical. Because you, in order to determine a rear setback, you have to, you have to determine where the front lot line is. And the same with the side. But in this, so, this, this, this is inconsistent, this decision, because this lot in Higgins Beach would have a different result than it is in Pine Point. And it's, and the only difference is, it's in a different zone. It, the same lot would have, would have a different result. And if you look at the definition in the ordinance of yard, of yard side, and you look at the definitions, and these have been provided to you by the town's attorney, of yard front, and these definitions, it, it, to determine what a yard side is, it states that a yard side is the lot line extending from the front yard to the rear yard. So, for the code enforcement officer to determine the side setback, he has to determine that there's a front lot, where the front lot line is, and therefore, that's, wherever that is, that's where the thirty-foot setback would begin, and where it's the rear. And you can't determine the side logically unless you can determine what the front is. So, we believe, just from a logical interpretation of the, of the ordinance, that the code enforcement's decision is misplaced and it's mistaken and an error. The second argument in the alternative would be, if you look at the definition of street, we fit under that definition, according to my client's affidavit, of street. And in the last paragraph of the definition of street, it talks about it. For the purposes of determining required setbacks under the ordinance, the term "street" shall mean any of the above plus include any right-of-way, which is what we have here today, which is described in the deed or plan. We provided the deed, these are deeded right-of-ways to the applicant's property, and my client has the same deeded right-of-way for this ten-foot right-of-way that leads up to his property, which provides a principal means of access to abutting properties. We have that here. Under my client's affidavit, which we submitted, he uses, and the pictures you can see from the pictures, they both use the same access, it's the same right-of-way. I mean, it's basically the width of a driveway. It's only ten feet wide because it's a grandfather. But they both use this property, they both use this right-of-way. So that is providing, that is, in essence, should is providing access according to the definition of street, which means where that, where that right-of-way stops at the applicant's property is the front lot line. Because it's, it, it, it's on the street. And that should be, and from that front lot line, which is the entire width of that front lot line, there should be a thirty-foot setback from that line. So, that's our argument. I, I, I'd like to have an opportunity, of course, after the code block, code enforcement officer testifies to cross-examine. And I want to make sure that in your package you received our application, and that you also have the staff memo and the, and the letter from the town attorney regarding this issue as well. So that, I want to make sure all the materials are in the filing they have.
Everybody has the packet, correct? And everybody have a chance to review the letters that were sent out?
Yes.
And my client is here, I provided by affidavit in order to shorten time for the litigators, but my client is here to testify. If you have any questions regarding the facts, this case is a little different than the other ones, where it's more of a legal issue, an interpretation of statute, rather than a, a, a factual issue, that is, where we need to really find out what was going on in nineteen thirty and forty specifically. So this kind of appeal is really not relevant tonight. But I'd be more than happy answering the questions or my client testifies.
Okay, thank you for your information. Would you like to elaborate on?
Um, so, yeah, so, uh, for those who I haven't met yet, I'm Jay Chase, I'm the planning director in town. And where this application is an appeal of the finding, of the action of the zoning administrator on a building permit, he's actually one of the folks who will be testifying before you. So I'm really here to serve, to help with process. And so, just to lay out, and that, as I think was pretty well articulated already, that through the appeals process, um, there's opportunity for the appellant, who we just heard from, to present their case, and then there's opportunity for the zoning administrator to present his case on the matter. After those two items are done, there will be opportunity for public comment, and then discussion will pursue through the chair, in which there can be sort of, at your discretion, either questions to the board or sort of, uh, back and forth of testimony, again, at the board's discretion. And ultimately, what the board is being asked to determine tonight is, really, you have three courses of action to take after your deliberation. One, to affirm the, the action of the zoning administrator. The other would be to reverse the action of the administrator. Or the third option is to modify the action of the administrator. We can sort of talk through those, you know, again. But in terms of the merits of the case, I'll turn it back to you, Mr. Chair, to, I think the zoning administrator is in a better position to speak to that, and so with that.
Okay, Mr. Longstaff?
Yes, I'm Ron Longstaff, the zoning administrator for the town of Scarborough. As I said, and I think as Attorney Jones has already stated, the definitions are really important, because this is a non-conforming lot. And we have many non-conforming lots, and that's what makes this a lot neat. The first definition I want to point to is that it's in section two-D of the ordinance. It says, "No lot other than a lot of record lawfully created prior to November five, two thousand and three, shall be built upon unless there is access to the lot." Access is defined as, uh, street frontage on a public way, connection to a public way over one or more private ways, excepted by the planning board, so on and so forth. So this lot does not, because it's a lot of record as opposed to a newly created non-conforming, it's allowed, as you said, to be built on, and it does not have to have frontage or access. You could theoretically build on a lot with no access, meaning our definition, if it was a lot of record. So that's the first point I want to make. Also, um, Attorney Jones points to our definition of street. And I agree with everything he said, except for one thing. It says that for the purpose of determining required setbacks under the ordinance, including setbacks for corner lots, the term "street" shall mean any of the above and shall also include any right-of-way which is described in a deed or plan recorded in the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds and which provides the principal means of access to abutting properties. He's interpreting that to mean that the satlacks are the abutting property, which they are, but there's also an abutting property beyond the, the four East Grand property, and that right-of-way does not provide access to that property. Therefore, it stops right at the, the line of four East Grand, it does not continue on beyond. I interpret that definition to mean that you could have a ten-foot wide driveway type road, something that's old, been there for years and years, that continues on by and therefore creates frontage for all of the lots that use that road. That lot does not create frontage for four East Grand. It only provides a way to get to four East Grand. So my determination was that there was no frontage, because there's no street, meaning the definition, and it does not abut adjoining properties beyond it. If you can envision a whole road with many non-conforming lots on it, that road could theoretically be the street, and therefore you could apply that setback. I argue you can't apply a reasonable setback to a line which serves the satlack property as a sideline. It cannot be the front line for, for the four East Grand property, the property beyond. Therefore, there was no frontage. No frontage, no front yard. No front yard, we report to side and rear setbacks, which happen to be the same thing, and, and typically are throughout the ordinance. Why he's bringing up Higgins Beach, I have no idea. But if there were a landlocked property at Higgins Beach, we would probably find ourselves in the same situation, because it's a non-conforming lot. There would have to be some determination made as to whether or not there was street frontage. I can think of no lots at Higgins Beach to meet that requirement, save one. And, and I would argue the same thing, it has no street frontage. I would come to that same conclusion, based on the ordinance and the definitions in the ordinance. That's how we got to where we are. As far as the structure itself, it's meeting all of the setbacks, which it did not meet, or the original structure did not meet. You can see on the plan, there's, uh, the structure to the upper left of the lot is the one that's there now and will be torn down. And then the one that's got the darker outline on it is the new structure. And actually, that, there's a better plan, Jay, that says C-one, um, C-one-oh-one, I think, has the actual... I think you had it up. Yeah, that's the one, that's the one.
Do you want me to zoom in a little bit?
You can blow that up a little bit, that'd be great. I don't know if anybody can see this, I just sort of tried to highlight some of the things that were pretty light on, on the page. The satlacks house is here. The existing shed garage is here. You can clearly see that it's closer to the blue property line, that's the outline of the four East Grand property. This, the orange is the proposed building, and this yellow over here is the existing structure. This orange here is the ten-foot right-of-way and how it abuts the property line of the four East Grand property. Just to try to clarify some of the things that you can't pick out. Just to try to clarify some of the things that you can't pick out, maybe as well off the plan on the screen. I'm happy to answer any questions that anybody asks.
Is the existing, uh, building a house or a garage?
It's garage.
It's a garage. So there's no house on the lot?
This is the house on the lot. You can see it on the big screen, on the side screens. That, that is, that is the main dwelling. This was an accessory building that was placed illegally and for which we, we issued a, a letter of non-action on, but would not allow it to be improved or, or changed in any way until it met setbacks. They have proposed a plan that we deemed needs the setbacks, and therefore, that's why the permit was issued.
Mr. Longstaff, are you still up there? Mr. Longstaff, are you still up there? Can you point to the line that was the sideline that cannot act as frontage, in your opinion?
This line between the, the sat-lack property and 4 East Grand.
Okay. Thank you.
I think Mr. Jones is, is trying to allude to the fact that because the 10-foot right-of-way touches it down here, this entire property line now has to have a 30-foot setback, which I feel is unreasonable.
Thank you. Any other questions from members of the board? Seeing none, we open it up to public. Any comments from the public on this? Just state your name and address if you can, please.
I just gotta pull the mic.
Yeah, pull it down a little.
My name is Christine Hanen. My parents, along with my family friend Dr. Karen, are the owners of 4 East Grand Avenue. First, I want to thank you for the opportunity to read this statement that was prepared by my parents. Pamela Donaroma and Daniel Hanen, the co-owners of 4 East Grand Avenue. They regret that they're not able to be here tonight due to a prior commitment that they cannot. Four years ago, along with Dr. Karen, we purchased our dream home, our second dream home, we purchased our real estate second home at 4 East Grand Avenue. The property included a main house and an accessory building that was being used for storage. We planned on converting the accessory building into usable living space by adding insulation in the bathroom. At the time of the purchase, our real estate agent, the seller and his agent, and the local building inspector did not disclose to us that the accessory building was not in compliance with the town's regulations regarding proper setback distances. A key reason in deciding to purchase the property was the accessory building and its potential for improvement. Our neighbor witnessed the construction of the accessory building by the previous owner and may have known of compliance and permitting issues at the time, but did not file a complaint with the town, only after learning of our plan did he raise an objection. As a result, we were notified in a letter from the town zoning administrator, Brian Longstaff, that we could not modify the accessory building in its current location. However, we moved the building to bring it into compliance and could make desired changes. In that letter from Mr. Longstaff dated April 10 to November 15, he writes, "If you should wish to move forward with any plans to improve or modify the structure, or change its use to have a little space, we will first need to relocate the structure in compliance with the town's setbacks, lot coverage, and all other space, all in new standard. To that end, we hired an engineering company, a surveyor, a designer, and a builder. We submitted plans for design and placement of a new structure on the property so as to bring it into compliance with the setback rules and all, all other requirements of the town of Scarborough. We have invested a substantial amount of money in surveys, planning, and designing so that the new building would meet all town building requirements. We have revised plans as needed at considerable cost to make sure that the building was correct and in compliance with all of Scarborough building requirements. Having met all requirements, the town issued a building permit. Our neighbor has objected to this project at every step of the way and continues to do so today, which is why we are here. We do not believe that the objection of our neighbor is valid. The issuance of a building permit by the town of Scarborough is evidence of that. We are asking the town to uphold its original decision and allow us to move forward with our plans."
Thank you. Any others that would like to speak? Please state your name and address, please.
My name is Lord Karen. I'm of 4 East Grand.
Thank you.
I'm one of the owners of the property of 4 East Grand. My co-owners are my very close friends, that I've known for over 30 years. And we get along well, was a very influential factor when we agreed to share in the purchase of our property in May of 2014. Yet soon after, when my co-owners, their extended family and I, spent our first two days together at the house, I realized this presented a challenge for me that I had not anticipated. See, I've lived alone for the last 22 years and found it difficult adapting my solitary lifestyle to one which required spending considerable time with others and coordinating routine daily activities such as showering, eating, watching TV, and the next. But the existence of a shed on our property offered a solution to my need for solitude on those occasions that being with co-owners and others became overwhelming for me. Unfortunately, we did not realize the existing shed could not be made livable in its current location. Subsequently, we learned, however, that by moving it elsewhere on our property and meeting all the town's performance standards, we could convert it into an accessory unit. After consulting with several knowledgeable individuals, it became clear that instead of moving the shed, we would be better off simply constructing a new accessory unit whose footprint was no larger than the shed if we placed. We expected to have initiated that process sooner, but we were forced to reorder our priorities due to the urgently needed repairs within the main house. Our planning for the accessory unit thus began in earnest towards the end of June of last year. During this phase, I also began communicating the evolving plans for our property with our neighbor at 2 East Grand Avenue. This included at least six separate communications with him, of which three were direct face-to-face. He expressed a variety of seemingly endless concerns, including, but not limited, to those about the property line between our two properties, the anticipated timelines for construction, how the accessory unit would be used and by whom, the effects, if any, of positive runoffs, the location of the accessory unit's parking space, his privacy, the town's regulations regarding accessory units, and even questions about the unit's siding, window placements, and interior floor planning. Yet not once in all these communications did he ever raise the issue as the basis of his appeal. I assured him that our motivation for building the accessory unit was driven primarily by my desire to have personal space, and his use would be exclusively for family members with a number of occupants limited to just two. But my assurances did little to assuage his concerns, as was obvious by his email to me of July 20, 2017, in which he stated, "We understand that your current intention for the use of an accessory unit may be modest. Future owners, however, may want to rent an accessory unit to multiple users, creating a potential for all the problems associated with the intense utilization of a small lot with limited setbacks and limited parking." Who are these future owners? They are my co-owners, two daughters, who value and respect our property as much as we do. When they ultimately inherit it, which I hope will be many, many years from now, they will, as we have done, comply with the town's performance standards for accessory units. By validating your original decision to grant a building permit for our proposed unit, you will be enabling us to continue using and enjoying our property as we originally intended when we purchased it. Thanks, Mr. Jones.
Thank you. Any others wishing to speak?
Goodness, gentlemen.
Sure.
Now, sir, I'm a little confused as to what you were asking the town for. Were you asking for a accessory unit, or were you asking for a unit that is accessory to the property, to the building?
I believe what we were asking for was an accessory unit.
Mr. Chase, is it, what, you understood the situation to be?
I believe that's what the building permit is based on, is the application for an accessory unit. Correct. That's what the zoning.
Not a unit accessory to it, but like a standard accessory unit we used to approve here at the board?
Correct. Correct. As defined by the town, a place where someone could live independently of the, of the primary dwelling.
And turned over to the administrative, that's been turned over to about a year now to administration to make that decision.
Correct. Yep.
And the house, the lot we're talking about, the unit, is a unit inside of the envelope, so it wouldn't, under the assumption that Mr. Longstaff says there's no front setback, it would be inside the envelope, that's why it wouldn't have to come here.
Correct.
So it's basically two events almost. It, it's a unit that had to be moved to get it into compliance, it's more nearly into compliance, or in compliance, so it wouldn't come here. And it's an accessory unit to be used as defined by the town, so it wouldn't come here. So the issue really comes down to just one thing, is there any such things as front, can you have a lot without front str-?
Yeah, it's the only question before this board this evening, is, is the zoning administrator's interpretation of this lot correct, that it has no front yard? And that's the only question before this board, correct?
Thank you. Thank you for both of you.
Anyone else wishing to speak? Seeing none, I close the public hearing. Mr. Longstaff, I have a question for you. I know the only thing we've been talking about is just the front setback or the front yard. One of the people that just spoke referred to it as a shed, but you had said it's more like a garage or something. How big is this that was uncompliant, without compliance on it, that's there now?
Dimensions are, mine, I'm not sure.
16 by 20.
16 by 20.
So it's a pretty good size.
That's the shed size area, exactly the size of the accessory building.
We need to speak on the mic. He just can't hear you.
16 by 20, is that what you're saying?
Yes.
And her name?
And just state your name and address, please.
Monica Dominant, 671 Hobart Ave., Portland. I was the designer on the project. And the building size was exactly the same size as the shed that was in non-compliance, because we were going to move the shed. But the contractors all told us it would be, you know, beneficial for us to not use that shed, or just to build new and take the shed down. And so, and it's 16 by 20.
Okay.
So, but there was any other questions about that?
That's the only question I have.
Yeah.
Thank you. Open it up to the board for any questions of?
I still have questions for the code enforcement officer.
I do not, I would say, I'm just, so it talks about, to me, each side of the question may be asked only through the chair, and persons here. So it's really at the discretion of the chairman as to where we proceed from here.
Okay.
As, as spelled out in section, so the question to staff was, and, you know, what's the, the sort of procedure moving forward, and as section five, C3 spells out that, you know, each, each side, the appellant and, and the zoning administrator shall be, shall present their case to maintain orderly procedure. Each side shall proceed without interruption. Questions may only be asked through the chair. All persons asked at the hearing shall abide by the orders of the chair. At the discretion of the chair, rebuttal may be permitted by a person present on any testimony. So it's at the discretion of the chair. That's how we proceed.
Okay. Yeah, I would allow you to ask the questions, but please ask them to the board, and then we can have Mr. Longstaff come up and rebut any questions for you.
No, I will ask questions to the chair.
Okay.
But I mean, I think on the Title 30-A, state law, as regards to cross-examining this issue, with this kind of field, we're, well, I just have a couple of questions I wanted to clarify.
Sure.
To make sure that, that this is, this is a two, this is a two-story. I mean, I know there's been questions about what, what's being built. I'm not sure, you know, I don't want to get off track here, but it's a two-story, it's not a shed that's just getting moved over. It's a two-story building now. You know, it's maybe the same size, but it's an expansion of a non-conforming use. So if we want to get into that, into that, we can. But, but the, but the real issue is, it's only being moved 16 feet from the front lot line, rather than 30 feet. And that's really the issue, that they're not complying with the setback, because the code enforcement officer's decision, saying this lot has no front lot line, therefore we're going to give it a bigger building envelope than a conforming lot. So my question to the code enforcement officer is whether he agrees with me that the building envelope for this non-conforming lot is actually larger than it, than it would be for a conforming lot in the same zone.
Do you want to just ask all your questions now, and then we can have Mr. Longstaff answer it?
Okay. The second one is if he agrees that under the yard front definition, once, once it's determined where the front lot line is, that it, that under the ordinance, it states that it extends for the full width of the lot, that even though it touches only 10 feet of the front lot line, the lot, under the definition of yard front, it says that once you determine that, it extends for the entire width of the lot. And I would like him to confirm that as well.
Can I ask a follow-up question, Mr. Chair? Sure. Is that the end of your questions, or do you have another one?
I would like, the last, my last question would be for him to explain what he means in his last paragraph in his memo to the board, when he, when he says that the staff agrees that in the case of some type of right-of-way or travel easement that was in existence and used prior to any ordinance requirements, and which provided an actual yard front, as defined, the front yard setback would be applied. However, in this case, the means of access to the subject property does not provide a front yard, and therefore the front yard setback cannot be established. So my question is, what does he mean, how this is different than, than when he states for the first example, how is this different? And what does he mean by means of access? I mean, this is a right-of-way that's, it's not 50-foot wide, it's a right-of-way that's traveled by tar and is used by both properties. So I don't know what he means by means of access that differentiates this case from the case of these sites above, which would require a 30-foot setback in this case.
Okay, great. Are those all your questions?
Thank you.
If you could just hang out, just hang out right there for a minute. We want to have members of the board may have some questions on your three questions.
Yeah, my question for you is around the definition of a street. And definition of a street as described here says, "For the purpose of meeting the street frontage and access requirements for this ordinance, the term 'street' shall mean only a public way, a private way approved by the planning department under section IXI of this ordinance, or a street approved by the planning board under the town Scarborough subdivision regulations." Okay? But it also says underneath that, "For the purpose of determining required setbacks under this ordinance, including setbacks for corner lots, the term 'street' shall mean any of the above and shall also include any right-of-way which is described in a deed or plan recorded by the Cumberland County Registry of Deeds," right?
Correct.
Based on that, where that 10-foot property or right-of-way connects into the front of, or the edge of the property, is it written in the deed that it's connected?
Oh, absolutely. That's on their plan. That's their only access to the property. So that's a deeded 10-foot right-of-way, without a doubt.
Okay.
And I provided, my client's deed that shows that same 10-foot right-of-way, but that, that's on their plan, they've had a survey, I mean, that's a deeded right-of-way for that 10 feet. That's how, that's the only, their only access, it goes across my client's property.
Okay.
And that's the same access that abuts both properties. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions? No. Mr. Longstaff?
Mr. Longstaff, can you please answer the same question that I just asked? What is the interpretation of the 10-foot right-of-way connection to that owner's property?
The 10-foot right-of-way does provide access for the owners of 4 East Grand past the sat-lack property to their property. The easement, the deeded right-of-way, if you will, stops at that shared property. It does not continue along.
True, but that shows us the connection point to their property?
Yes.
And it is in the deed that it shows that that connection is their connection point?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
As to the question of, is this giving this lot a bigger yard size or yard area or available area than any other lot? It all depends on the size of the other lots. Just because it doesn't have a front yard setback, yes, it's bigger than if you took the same-sized lot and applied a front yard setback, absolutely. I think anybody would agree that, and that makes good, makes sense. I'm not sure what the point is. What was the second question? Anybody know?
Second question, I believe, was a bigger structure.
Third yard front definition.
Has to do with the definition of the front yard follows the full width of the lot?
Yep. It is, it is true that yard front, in our definition, I believe I provided that, is an open, unoccupied space on the same lot with the building between the front line of the building and the front line of the lot, and extending the full.
of the building and the front line of the lot, and extending the full width of the lot. Again, one would have to determine a front line. I argue there is no front line, meeting our definition of front yard. One of the reasons I come up with that is that we also have a definition of the lot lines, and that says the lines bounding a lot, wherever a lot abuts a street, the sideline of the street on the side abutting the lot shall constitute the lot line. What you see, the end of that 10-foot right-of-way is not a sideline of a street. It's an end line of a street, if you will. It's not a sideline, and therefore you can't apply a front yard setback to it unless you apply it to 10 feet of width, because it's not providing a right-of-way throughout for the full width of the lot, which is why that definition says for the full width of the lot. You can't, on a regular road or any road, just apply half of the frontage of that lot and say, "There's my frontage." You know, it's obviously going to be from sideline to sideline. And the third question.
Third one was explaining your last paragraph, how this is different, how this...
Means of access.
Means of access.
And I think I already did that. So once again, what's said, where it says, and which provides the principal means of access to abutting properties. So there is a abutting property on one side, there's an abutting property on the other. It only provides access to the Satlack property and to no other property beyond 4 East Grand.
Mr. Loizel. Did you have any other questions about the street determination?
I am sorry. Oh, by the way, 2 East Grand does have frontage on East Grand Avenue, which is a difference.
Ed, can you point that out, please?
I actually have an aerial here that point.
Okay.
Not 100% sure, who do you want me to point to?
You said it was also, I missed, maybe I misheard you. It's also fronting at 2?
I think...
What did you say?
Whatever Mr. Longstaff represents. So this is 2 East Grand Avenue here. This is 4 East Grand Avenue, the main building. This is the shed structure in question as is currently there, proposed to be moved a little bit. Mr. Longstaff just referenced that 2 East Grand Avenue, their frontage is here on East Grand Avenue, I believe is all Mr. Longstaff was saying. And then you can sort of see the driveway here, which is generally where the, obviously that 10-foot easement way is. This is tax map parcels, this isn't survey data, so you have to take it with a bit of grain of salt, but we, toggling between the two, you can sort of, this gives you a representation of what we're talking about.
Certainly. The thing I'm struggling with is, again, under the definition of the street, it says, "For the purpose of meeting the street frontage and access requirements," it states the three items, and then it says, "For the purpose of determining required setbacks under this ordinance, including setbacks for corner lots, the term 'street' shall mean any of the three above, also include any right-of-way which is described in the deed." The only way this would be described in a deed that doesn't travel through it is that connection point of 10 feet, right? So I guess that's what I'm struggling with. I know it doesn't travel through the property, but the only reference to it will be at that connection point. So how can it, in my opinion, how can it, how else can it be described from frontage on that property, except the only connection from this definition, the street frontage, has to be that 10-foot connection?
My argument is that right-of-way is deeded, that right-of-way provides them access. It's not their property. It's just theirs to use to get to their property. And so, obviously, you can't stop 2 feet from the property line and jump over to your property. It has to connect.
Correct. But this doesn't say that that...
I'm not arguing that. I'm saying that it should create a sideline or a frontage.
Right, but this statement around "street" doesn't say that it has to travel through the property. It just says also include any right-of-way which describes in a deed or plan, and the only description is that connection point of the 10-foot line that touches that property.
Yes, but Mr. Loizel does say that it has to serve abutting properties, abutting properties, not just one property, but abutting properties. And I interpret that to mean that that right-of-way, whether it's 10, 15, 20 feet, doesn't matter, has to go, has to act and behave like a public street would behave, like a private road.
But since it only touches one other property, you're saying it doesn't mean it because it's not two or more properties that that feeds?
Well, it doesn't go through the property to provide frontage for another abutting property. It just stops dead at the property line.
But haven't they proved they've been using that as a right-of-way or a street by traveling on it?
I'm not arguing that point.
Can I just jump in here?
Yeah.
Jeff, go ahead.
Mr. Longstaff, if we had a property that, let's take this off the table. It's a property, and it's 200 feet wide, whatever, and in the middle of it is a right-of-way, and it's allowed to be 60 feet on each side to be able to build its tool, that's for sake of discussion. And there is a right-of-way that cuts through that property to get to the back property. The sideline setback would be the same side that it's setback has required. The right-of-way does not make a sideward setback, correct?
The right-of-way does make a, no, the right-of-way creates frontage.
Does the right-of-way make a, is the right-of-way create the, what I'm trying to establish, I guess I'll figure it out in my head, is, to me, if you've got a right-of-way that's coming through your property for CMP, for sake of discussion, my lot line is still my lot line. It's just a right-of-way that's going through my property.
Yes, I agree with that.
What is the difference between a right-of-way that's allowed for CMP and a right-of-way for allowed for traveling on the road? Is there anything?
What's the difference?
I guess, to me, a right-of-way is not a setback at all. It's just a opportunity to be able to pass through somebody's property.
However, I just offer that the, so, but the definition does clearly state, and I'm under the definition of "street," it talks about, "For purposes of determining required setbacks of this ordinance, the term shall mean, any of the above shall also include any right-of-way which is described in the deed, which provides, and I'm skipping some verbiage, which provides principal means of access to the abutting property." So I think in your, in your example there about a right-of-way for CMP to run the power lines, that's not a principal means of access. This is really talking about a principal means of access right-of-way, which no one disagrees or is arguing that that 10-foot wide right-of-way that crosses, I don't believe anyone's arguing it, that crosses 2 East Grand Avenue, the Satlack property, is the means of access to Lot 4. Then the question just becomes, as already been articulated, since that right-of-way stops at the property line, how then do you define a front yard? Obviously, Mr. Longstaff has determined in his estimation that there is no front yard for the host of reasons he's spelled out. The Satlack and their representative have indicated that because the right-of-way stops at that property line, it is then therefore that property line, and now I'm talking about the property line between the Satlack and 4 East Grand Avenue, becomes the front yard. You know, and so the question is, is that the right interpretation? Is the interpretation that, sure, every yard needs to have a front yard, and since the terminate, the 10-foot access easement terminates at that corner, do you make a, and the ordinance talks about it extends the full width of the lot, that's already been referenced, does that mean you sort of project that 10-foot easement straight across the front of 40, front, I should, make sure to use that word, just directly towards the ocean, I should say, and, you know, sort of along its pathway, if you will?
It's natural progression.
Towards the shed.
Right, and I'm not, you know, I'm just sort of trying to articulate, and again, and it's been referenced in our own town attorney's memo to the board, that, you know, there really isn't, you know, a true clear answer that, you know, that this is very much up to interpretation, and so...
Mr. Chair. Yeah, because wait, the screen's right now, if you're looking at them, it looks like it extends a little bit further, but it just stops right there, right?
I think that, I think that's just the gravel, the easement stops.
From a legal standpoint, right.
From a legal determin, right, the easement stops, now their gravel driveway may continue on, and yeah.
Right, but that stops right there.
Yeah.
Go ahead, Mr. Longstaff.
I just offer that as a comparison, whenever we do a private way or any private road as part of the subdivision, or just a private way to access a back lot, we don't approve it to just hit that back lot. We require a frontage to be created. In other words, if the district requires 100 feet of street frontage, we require that private way to extend 100 feet into that lot to create that frontage. We do not require that all the lines that that touches then should be extended as long as 100 feet of frontage is created, or 200, whatever the case may be. We don't allow it to stop at the property because that does not create frontage.
But in this case, it does stop.
I'm not saying that. I'm saying the opposite of that. In this case, it doesn't. My interpretation is that it does not create frontage. It only hits the property line.
Okay. Did you figure out your questions?
If this were to decide, the board decides, they would actually come back as, say, for instance, we disagreed with the code enforcement officer, and the same plan would come forward. It would come forward to this board as a, what kind of appeal? Reduction?
You know, at this point, I think, rather than trying to muddy the waters, I think it's best that the board sort of stay focused on trying to determine what frontage is, but it would ultimately, yes, a variance would be...
A variance or a...
I believe it would be a variance. But again, I think a variance would be the request. I don't know that a reduction of yard size available.
First, we need to answer this question.
Right, yeah.
So what we're trying to address is the frontage.
Right, that's the question, that's the question before the board this evening.
Any other questions?
One of the other things I'm struggling with in the definition of, this right-of-way travels to service other properties. I think the way, the intent of that would have been, it would have been properties, not IES, but properties with an S in the brackets, meaning one or more. Because you don't necessarily put a right-of-way in just to serve multiple pieces if there's only one property behind it. So I would have thought the intent would have been to serve the property that is behind this. So I look at properties, IES, as the property or multiple properties that sat behind that front lot. So I'm still, I'm looking for you to help me come up with a different determination. And I, you know, I'm asking the question, does that make sense, or do you think I'm all wet?
I'd like to speak to that, Mr. Loizel. I mean, for me, you know, where I'm coming from, I look at the town, and I think it comes down to a word. It says properties. If the town wanted the definition to say access to any property, it would say any property. It says, to me, I mean, I'm seeing, it says access to abutting properties. So I see Mr. Longstaff says, this is only access to one property, this doesn't apply.
So my question to you?
So I interpret this as properties is strictly saying it has to involve more than one property, has to be involved for this required setbacks, for the purpose of this.
So you're saying the right-of-way doesn't exist unless there's more than one property connected to it?
Under the town definition, yes. It says properties, not property.
We could look around and see multiple situations where this exists everywhere.
And I would love someone to present us evidence tonight to do that. I know, I don't know if anyone has.
That's a great point.
Yeah. I was wondering tonight if someone would be able to present evidence showing any consistencies as to if this is allowed, this isn't allowed, but no one has. So we're really looking at properties, to me, is what I'm looking at at this point.
I'd like to see some data on that.
Well, we have to evaluate the evidence that's been presented to us tonight.
Mr. Longstaff, go ahead.
Well, again, the section of that definition, it says, "It shall include any right-of-way which is described in a deed." So let's break it into two pieces. Any right-of-way described in a deed, okay? Got that. It's described in a deed, nobody's arguing that. And then it says, "And which provides principal means of access to abutting properties." So to me, if it doesn't go through that lot and provide access to abutting properties, it's only, only the Satlack property, and they could actually use East Grand Avenue. So it's there, they're using it, but it's going by their lot, and it's stopping at 4 East Grand. It's not continuing on to provide access for other properties. So it meets one of those conditions in that definition, but not the other. That's my interpretation.
I mean, looking at the map, it's clear what you're saying. Any other questions? Motion?
Yeah, I got a question. Hopefully, somebody out there can answer it. Who else uses that right-of-way? Who uses that right-of-way?
Go ahead.
I can answer that. My clients use it, the applicants use it, and the abutters use it to the other side. If you see, if you look at that map, you'll see that that driveway, that right-of-way ends, and then the driveway goes over to access the other property that's next door. Now, whether they have a legal right, but I'm just telling you that if you look at, if you look at the map and the driveways, they're all attached to that 10-foot right-of-way. So it's, it's three properties that are using it, and it's, you can see it on the map.
We have the public hearing closed, we can't take any more comment from the public.
It's hard to start really looking at it.
No, I mean, again, unless there's a deed showing that the other properties are using that as access, I mean, it's just a picture. I have, you know, we'll drive on different driveways.
Motion for the board or anything? Further discussion?
I'm struggling with this as well, and ultimately, again, based on the information provided before us, looking at the word, that's in the, that's in the town ordinance, property versus properties. That's kind of where I'm standing right now.
Yes.
My person, at this point, I don't think we have enough information to make a call.
I would agree. I mean, we're looking, Mr. Loizel brought up a good point. We don't know per se, and it just does, like, to your point, address any other issues in town where it does actually happen like this.
That's one of the reasons why I asked the other question, is because it may be easier to just send it through the zoning board and get it out of the way. You might say that every time. It's not one way or the other, but...
Well, I mean, I struggle that these people hired an attorney, and this is the case that they presented today, and so it's...
I'm just saying I don't have enough information to make a decision. So my position would be, the alternatives out there for them is out of choice. I'm just making a point.
Right.
Just to be clear, I just want to make one point, that the folks at 4 East Grand Avenue do have a building permit. So they, they are operating under the assumption that they can do what they want. They don't need a variance. So for them, they're sitting on a permit approved by our code enforcement officers. It's the appellant's who have, who are bringing forth to this board, asking if the code officer has erred in his judgment. So I think if there is additional evidence, that's certainly within the board's rights to ask, request that, and I think it would be good to give clear guidance to the appellant's as to what that evidence is that you're seeking. So, because I don't know that it was entirely clear to me what the, what the request was, and maybe it's clear to others and so on.
Yeah, I mean, looking at this, if we decided to table this, I don't know if we can table it or not, but they gotta, would they have to stop building with that building permit?
I think Mr. Longstaff may have, be able to...
The appellant's actually have the right to execute that permit, is what I understand. Obviously, they don't want to do that until they know that the appeal has paid, okay? But I want to clarify one thing. To me, they've made their case. Your job is to determine, did I make an error or not? If you can't decide that tonight, I don't know what tabling it is going to do for you. I don't know that they can come back with any more information. I don't know that I can. You just, the main municipal association puts it this way, tie goes to the round. If they haven't clearly proven their case, and you still don't know for sure, then you have to side with me because you have no other recourse. If you feel they've proven their point, and I'm in error, then you should rule in their favor. I don't think it's fair to table it and send it back. I don't know what, you've given a request for additional info. You don't have enough to do it tonight. I think there's, you know, I think you need to do that. I think you need to make a decision.
Can you help us out with the semantics of property and properties, which everybody seems to be stuck on? Because the appellant's saying it does go to two additional properties.
They didn't prove that tonight, though.
Right. I understand that.
I think, I think that the appellant has provided you with plenty of information. I think I've provided you with plenty of information. I think the ordinance is sufficiently ambiguous to create a, a question mark on this, which we will note and correct the next time we make amendments, but for tonight, I think you got the information you need. I don't, I don't know what table it's actually going to do.
So when you issued this, your point of issuing this was, you looked at it, it just extended to that one property. It didn't go over to... extended to that one property. It didn't go over to add any other properties to it.
I'm just looking at it as not creating frontage for East Grand. Plain and simple.
And if I can, I think that the last point, or maybe the second-to-last point that Mr. Longstaff made, is the relevant one, that, again, our town attorney reviewed this and said, this is sufficiently ambiguous and vague. You know, this is strictly up to interpretation. There's really, you know, is there a right and wrong answer? The courts may ultimately be the deciders, but right now, it's, this board is sitting in judgment. And then whatever your decision is, may or may not wind up before a superior court, who will look at the ordinance and make their own determination. But at this point, it's.
So we're trying to evaluate Mr. Longstaff's interpretation of?
You're actually trying to evaluate the appellant's case. It's, has, you know, again, it does, and that, we don't need to go around that again, but.
Mr. Maroon, you had another question?
Well, we seem to be following the ICC code in the town for setbacks, for roads. What's the definition there? But yard is a little bit different. This is what yard says, and I'm not sure it matters or not, but the same code, is front yard, a yard extending across the full width of the lot, the depth of which is the minimum horizontal distance between the front lot line and a line parallel thereto.
This is different. It says.
I think it's important that we stay interpreting the town zoning ordinance.
Yeah.
I don't disagree, but we have challenged with.
Which says, which says an open, unoccupied space in the same lot with the building between the front line of the building and the front line of the lot, and extending the full width of the lot. That's front yard.
But a front yard is not a front, necessarily a front setback or setback, I don't know, for front boundary.
Front yard isn't, I don't know that I follow, front yard isn't necessarily a front boundary, but.
He's trying to say, is the front yard.
Depending on where the house is positioned on the lot.
Defined by the front of the building.
So I think that's, that's sort of one of the questions, is, is a front yard determined by having a street, or is it truly the orientation of the house? And this was actually a discussion we had sort of early on. Is when typically administratively, when someone comes in for a building permit to the town and they're in our four zone and they're required to have 100 feet of frontage with a 30-foot setback, when they submit a building permit, we don't ask, which door is your front door? We say, if here's your street, that's your 30-foot setback. And so I think that was, so as this started to get looked at and said, okay, if that's how we typically administrate it, then this lot, you know, again, at Brian's determination, having no street frontage, sort of said, okay, there is no street frontage meeting that definition, so therefore, everything's just a side yard. Because if there's no front, there's no rear, then everything's just a side.
Same could probably set to the existing house.
And the same question would be, if the street connects to a property, does that determine the front yard?
And then.
I guess I'd open up to the board for any further discussion or motions.
I've got a, I've got a question that, it's really got nothing to do with the front yard as such. Is, is the complaint about the building, is it because it's too close to the quote-unquote front yard or front line? No, okay. Wait a minute. If that's the case. If that's the case, if the building was just moved back another 15 feet or so.
My understanding, it's already been construction started, right?
No.
No, okay.
I don't believe there has been, anyway. A permit's been issued, but I don't believe work has started.
And it's not a decision to overturn the permit to tell them to move it back. It's not a determination to find out if the frontage exists, right?
Right. So your determination, your, the board's actions tonight would either be to, again, it would be to affirm the building permit that the zoning administrator has interpreted the ordinance correctly, to reverse the zoning administrator's determination based on the sat-lack representation that truly the front setback should be determined at basically that property line where the easement terminates, or you could modify the discussion and, you know, the board could determine where that front setback is. Is it the continuation of that right-of-way? And do we have a, so that's ultimately the board's three actions. And I will just note that, as I was just going to sit tonight to help support the board in making your determination, when I spoke with our town attorney, the one thing that he did highly recommend for this board to consider when you do make a motion, to be sure that that motion includes at least a few sentences as to why you're making your determination, whether that's, you know, what evidence has been provided, or that there's evidence in this letter or that letter that helps support your determination. Because without sort of stating your rationale, the courts may just turn it right back to you and not even consider the case and just require you to make, take action.
So that's why I think we're all struggling with this, because we don't, I know at least three of us don't feel we have enough information. But where do we go with that?
If there's, if, I would suggest, again, as I said, if the board has, if there's information that you feel you need and you can clearly articulate what that information is, that's, I think, completely, you know, it's spelled out in the ordinance, that if there's more evidence that the board needs, then you can table the item for further discussion. But it'd be helpful to know exactly what that information is.
And the town attorney didn't address that at all, if we came to a determination that we have to table it. Because we didn't have enough information.
You don't have to table it. You can, again, it's, yeah.
I don't think tabling it would serve either party in this case. I agree, we need to come to a decision to this on, a decision on this tonight, excuse me. From the evidence that is here before me in the packet tonight, I don't believe the interpretation that there is a front yard. And I agree that the dirt driveway does not create frontage. That's my thought.
Can I get others' thoughts on that?
I mean, clearly, I'm in agreement with James. I think that, you know, I also think it's unfair to the folks who have been issued their building permit to further be prolonged because of the appeal that was brought. And I mean, this is it. This is your hearing. They brought their appeal. If you don't feel you have enough information, then shame on the appellant for maybe not giving enough information. But I mean, in a court of law, it's a one-time presentation. All the evidence is given. I think it's been given, and I think it's only fair for these people to be able to move forward. I think, given the testimony that the town, Brian, has given, I think we have enough information to reaffirm the apartment.
This place.
Mr. Chair?
I was just going down.
I'm sorry, I was going to ask if it was acceptable that you speak, because I don't know that they've really spoken that much.
Yeah, I was just going down, kind of gathering an opinion of the board.
Let's see where we're at. To me, there's a simple solution. Just move the proposed building back. Satisfies everybody. You know, we're going to argue about technical definitions of a street and a side yard and everything like that. If you can move the building back, move the building back. Can you move the building back?
No.
Why?
It'll hit the house, right?
Well, I can't, I can't tell from a picture.
I guess what I'm asking right now for your opinion is, do we have enough information to determine Brian's decision, Mr. Longstaff's, or do we not? That's basically all I want, is yes or no answer, do we, do we or don't we, in your opinion?
Yeah.
Yes, for?
Yeah, we've got enough information.
For upholding what Mr. Longstaff's decision was, or reversing it?
Well, now you're asking for my opinion. You're asked, do we have enough information? Yes, we have enough information. I haven't made up my mind yet.
Okay. Mr. Maroon.
I'm just going to, I don't have enough information yet, but I think it's there.
I'm struggling as well.
I have an opinion on a different angle. And again, I'm just trying to get options. To me, the answer would be in common sense, man. Where do they go in the house? Because that's usually the front. Well, that building itself, just that unit, does not have a front door or entrance on the quote-unquote front side. It's on the left, right-hand side or in the rear side. So to me, it comes down to, if you want to make it quick and dirty, the home has decided where the front is. And the front actually is probably, if anything, over the porch side.
Just for a point of reference, Mr. Maroon pointed on some piece of paper over here, if I'm not mistaken.
Right. If you're looking at the, to me, the home kind of determines what it is, right? I mean, if you look at the small unit, the small unit shed.
Are you talking about the entryway to the small unit?
Right, the entryway to the small unit.
Okay.
It's not on the quote-unquote side that would be considered.
The side?
Right. It's in the, it's actually either on the left hand at the bottom or on the right, one of the other. And it looks like it would be considered either both. And if you look at the house, it's the same kind of thing, that circular area. And based on, I, I, I think Mr. Longstaff's right. I mean, the center is really, the front, there is no front. If you wanted to argue a front, I'd argue the back here, like most seasonal properties, would be the front, because that's the view. You've got a camp, right? You look in the water, your front is not your backyard. It's the front yard, right? If this is a property in the water, in ocean area, where are you going to look? Up the back, looking at East Grand, you look at the, the, the tree and look at the water. My opinion is you're probably going to sit on that deck, and that's your front yard. It's not a back deck. It's a, that's my front yard if I'm living there. So I don't, I have to come up with a way to define what front yard is. And I think you have to take it out of the neighborhood thing, and you have to put it into a second home category. If you live on a second home and I have a second home, I've had many second homes I've liked, the front is not the park where my car is. The front is where I spend my time. It's the front side of the house. I think, I think if anything, the front is actually, that was probably the front. I'd say there are two, here and here. Here for this property and here for this property. So I'd argue, and I think Mr. Longstaff's correct.
So that's kind of the defining fact.
I agree, Mr. Maroon.
Any motion for?
I'd like to move to affirm the town's position on this building permit, based on, I don't believe that the interpretation that there is a front yard and that the driveway does not create yard frontage.
Does that spice what the lawyer wanted us to affirm and on?
Yep. The attorney said it could be, just wanted to be sure you articulated your rationale, and I heard two, two reasons stated in that motion, so I, I hope that would work. Guess the courts will decide if it gets that far.
I mean, I don't, I don't have to reiterate what Mr. Longstaff said. He's already read it into record, and it's been written into record with the town's notes.
Any second?
I was going to discuss.
All those in favor, that Mr. Longstaff made the right decision?
What's happening?
We're voting to affirm the town's position.
You guys also?
Yeah, it kind of jumped on me. I think we need to clarify my comments. I didn't really jump that fast on.
I was, we were talking about his comment about his lakefront property.
If you look at my deed, I was going to ask Mr. Chase, but if you look at my deed on the lakefront property, okay? The backside, where the, where the right-of-way is, is my backyard. But that's my front door. My front yard is on the lot. So I guess I'm just trying to reaffirm the point that I'm making, which is front yard is very, very, very subject to interpretation, because legally, I have a plot plan, plot of the second, and it shows my backyard is where the front of my house is. But nobody in a property like that would consider that your front. So here's, I'm just trying to reaffirm it and to close the door on it, as opposed to kind of just saying, yeah, I can't throw it in the air. But I mean, I can show a deed that would show that. I don't know what the town's rules are, though. See, I know what Naples is. I don't know what Scarborough is.
And my point was, that's the best argument I've heard. That makes sense to me.
Yeah, I did ask, were you finding a fact on that, if that would have?
Mr. Chase, about a view there, as far as what the town, is there, does Scarborough have a definition like that?
Of front yard? I think we.
No, I mean, what I mean by that is, what I mean by that is.
Or a property on the water.
Our definition, these are definitions. You've read them. There's nothing, there's no other hidden shoe here.
That's the challenge. It enables us to find.
And you said that did affirm Mr. Longstaff's decision.
In my view, contrary, without any other information, if I'm going to argue the position of what is the definition of a front yard, it's where the house determines that. Under the assumption that we've got the exact problem out, where the heck is it? We're all looking at, we have fairly good, intelligent people here, to the attorneys, the owners, the town. We've got a fairly good group of people trying to figure this out. So then you have to fall back to, what is the house? What does the house think? Well, the house defines itself as the front being where you live your life, and the back being where you happen to be driving in, but that's the backside of the house. And that's, I guess, my argument, and that's the logic of these.
So you two okay for a vote now?
Okay.
And you heard the, can you repeat the motion?
Me?
Yes.
Yes, okay. So I'll repeat my motion. I move to affirm the town's position in giving them the building permit, based on, I don't believe that the interpretation that there is a front yard, and I agree that dirt driveway does not create yard frontage. And is there a second?
Okay.
Mr. Maroon.
Mr. Maroon, okay.
All those in favor of affirming the decision? All those opposed? Passes? Five.
Four.
Four yes. Thank you. Thank you.
So this one is table? This one is table? We're done with that?
This one?
Yeah, we've already had these.
Oh, those two were together, we were reaffirming.
And then this one we just did? This one is table, so we can just let them know that item, appeal number, and then we'll move on to appeal number two.
Okay, so extra.
Will you please have Mr. Longstaff to join us again? Thank you, folks, for your comments.
We're not siding, okay.
No, because that's just going to be a letter to the town.
Got you.
Appeal number 2622, a variance appeal request by Anthony.
DiAmico.
DiAmico, 93 Spurring Road, assessor's map R100, parcel one, has been tabled. With that being said, we'll move on to appeal number 2623, practical difficulty variance request by Ingrid Grisick. Grisick, 28 Driftwood Lane, assessor's map U21, parcel 106. Is there anybody here to talk on the behalf?
Mr. Richmond.
Please state your name and where you're from.
I don't know what's happening there, Mike.
You got one going down and one going up.
This is our last one.
Yes. The first two we had were reaffirmed. First three reaffirmed. Yeah, right.
Don't touch it.
Magic touch. Magic touch.
Yes.
Yes.
Thank you. Again, I forgot, I missed the introduction, because I had to leave. My name is Mike Richmond, custom concepts architects here in Scarborough. Here on behalf of Peter Grisick, who's over there on the left, her family, twenty-eight Driftwood Lane, down on Pine Point. After that discussion, I sat through, because I would be, so please bear with me. The Grisick family has owned this property since the early nineteen eighties. Portions of the property over the years have fallen to some disrepair. And like many properties on Pine Point, the cottage was built well before prior zoning standards, and it makes it really challenging for us to make any improvements without some relief from the town. So this particular lot is.
No, it's not there, Mike, so just pull that around.
This particular lot is quite long, it's dead flat, and it has a very long building window. So I tried to use some colored sharpies here to illustrate. The light blue is the property lines, the purple would be under current setbacks. The green are the two existing structures. Right now, there's an existing cottage, twenty-four foot by twenty-four foot, and it is an existing shed. And the orange is my interpretation of a large, very large depth off the second floor. So the Grisicks have asked me, have asked me to develop a design to provide more bedrooms and living spaces for the growing family to use throughout the year. Given the unique layout of the site and the structures, I've worked with them for almost a year and a half to try to develop something to meet their needs. For several different reasons, we decided to maintain existing foundation. Seems to be in fine shape. We've done a lot of projects on similar projects, we've built type of by the same river. So I think it has some good bones to give up on for a while. We've decided to maintain the majority of the first floor frame, and as much of the second floor system as possible. We've also decided to maintain the shed in the back and the rear decks that are by. And the stewards do not throw away things we don't. So I have consulted with Mr. Longstaff several times on this design to find two probably, trying to come in front of you folks. So we developed a quick design, and I included one in the packet. Initially, we went off to the left-hand side of the property, we maintained the driveway. We basically were trying to add at least a single car garage bed during the winter, probably there isn't one. So we put that on the left-hand side, but it really seemed probable. It's a nice long lot, and we were sort of forcing it over to the left over that setback line. And we really felt that we've had a negative effect on the usuals property, we're hearing the crowd that they live next door. Then I tried to expand vertically, which any of you who know me, we've done many, many times, so if you guys don't have to see. Where, adding any existing portion here and go up. So we've done that a few times. In this particular case, really struggled with it, because that only leaves us about thirteen feet or so of depth to work with, side to side, if we're gonna try to keep the structure there that we want to maintain. The shed, the decks, the first floor, the second floor frame. So that odd side would be really impractical for us to use. We have thirteen feet to work with. You lose about six inches on one side and six inches to the other for the walls, that leaves about twelve feet. Need a hallway to get through to get to your bedrooms, that's at least three feet. You're left with spaces that are only eight foot, eight foot six. So we tried that approach, and everything I did came up with a structure that was really odd, very impractical, and would be very expensive to build, because we're using architects and structural window to get there. So we developed this plan that's in front of you, which I'll read for the law. Sort of as a clear and practical approach to satisfy the needs. The highlights, the Grisicks really designed a garage. It didn't have to be big, we provided, or hopefully provided a single twenty-three foot deep garage on the right-hand side of the lot. We proposed to permanently remove the large deck sticking off the front of the house, which is pretty big and sticks out. It's really promising. Permanently remove that and upput it back.
Is that in the orange now?
Correct, well, a portion of it.
Okay.
I'd like to indent the addition in from the current front of the cottage. This here, the existing conditions, just a smaller copy of what you're just looking at. This is what I'm proposing. So there's the original green box. The new, I'd like to indent that just a little bit more. And as you can see, the orange, which is that large deck in the front, completely removed. I'd also like to take the stairs that currently go over the setback line and bend them, so they're in compliance. They're a wooden structure, so it's considered a portion of this structure. And basically, make a year-round home similar to many other homes in the world. This is a portion of Pine Point that's really been under transformation. So, a couple more quick things. One, one very important note. The location of this existing cottage is literally over the front setback line by just a few inches more than a setback reduction would allow. And I mean inches, and I talked about this at length. In other words, if this existing cottage happened to be just a few inches further back, we'd be asking for a more typical setback reduction, which I've done for many times, rather than a practical difficulty. Because I know practical difficulties are not easy to obtain. So I guess I'm, if we still fall under this and we're mandated to this, but just please keep in mind, we're this, literally this close to being able to have this, you know, a much simpler, simple process. So that said, I'm aware that we need to prove many items to you, but I want to discuss two in particular that we brought up during my conversations and in the letter that I received. Under the town's reading, that the strict application of the dimensional standards of the ordinance to the, to the property for which a variance is sought would both preclude a use of the property which is permitted in the zone in which it is located, and also would result in significant economic injury to the applicant. So, first, two quick things. First, the need for this variance is allowing the Grisicks to develop their seasonal cottage, which is permitted in the zone, into a year-round home, which is also permitted in this zone. Now, yes, the existing cottage could be converted, as is, into a year-round home. But it would not, however, allow a practical way for the Grisicks to provide a home, not a small cottage, to fit their needs without some relief. In other words, if the variance is not granted, the Grisicks would probably not see the value of investing the money into this cottage to make it into a home, if it doesn't provide the space for their family. So in my opinion, the relief that we seek is the only practical way to allow the Grisicks to have a year-round home allowed in the zone that fits their family's needs. The second point, relating to the financial aspect. So we seek this relief to allow the Grisicks to expand their home in a practical and straightforward approach. What I mean by that is we propose to go straight up. Foundation's in good shape, first floor framing seems to be in good shape, so we're trying to beat these stewards and just go straight up. If we're forced to comply with the setbacks and spend a lot of design fees and construction costs to create a more complicated structure, that ultimately would cost a lot more and offer less. If this relief is not granted, the Grisicks may find themselves in the unfortunate position in which they have to choose one of the following things. Number one, sell the property as is, really that great economic loss, I would imagine, given the condition of the cottage. Two, you can renovate the cottage as is, but not ever be able to achieve the true financial potential that the property could offer, just like all the other homes are gonna have transformed themselves. And the three, if it wasn't granted, you could develop a pretty complex and expensive structure that fits within the setbacks, but again, it really would not work for what they're looking for. Or the last item, remove the cottage completely, which we've done, and develop a new home design that conforms to the setbacks, setback lines. First off, that would be a challenge for us to do design-wise, because of the setback, the, the building window is a really odd shape to work with. But that definitely would be the most expensive option. So I see all of these options as resulting in an economic injury over the symbol approval of the request. And just one closing note, and I'll stop. We did apply and receive approval from the D E P, just in case that's a consideration as well. To that, we'll stop talking and finish.
I have a couple quick questions. On your designs over there, how much, from the existing to the new design, how much of that is coming down? Is it still the same where the indent comes out a little bit, is that the same as what the old structure has? Yeah?
So, if I understand your question correctly, this is the front of the existing house? This is the front of the new house, same spot?
Same, same spot, same footprint.
Straight up.
How much up are you going up?
We are presently, this might help a little?
I wouldn't put too many of those up there.
Yeah. All part numbers, right now, the existing peak is about twenty-one feet. The proposed would be around thirty-four foot ten-ish.
How long have they owned the home for?
Since the early nineteen eighties, I believe.
Thank you.
I have a question. Would you agree that if you were to redesign this into a more complicated structure, that it would not, would have an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, as far as budding houses?
Hundred percent yes.
Okay, thank you.
To touch on that, are there other properties surrounding that, three stories as well?
Yes, in fact.
I know where this house is, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think what the houses around it look like. It's hard to tell.
Oh, yeah, the first page.
Oh, yeah, we have it on there, don't we?
That one there.
The houses on the right is substantial. The one behind it was recently redone. I don't know the exact height, it's pretty tall, so.
Looks like across the street as well.
Yeah, but from a, from a scale perspective, I guess, overall scale, even this, especially when seen from the side, because it still would only be twenty-four feet. Probably still seems a smaller size compared to the more obviously built up.
Looks like the one in back might be a little bit smaller, but I'm not sure by this picture.
Uh, this one here?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the Demcoits property, which was recently more than doubled in size.
So, this is, this is an old, this is an older image.
Correct.
Image hasn't been updated.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, that's why I was trying to see if we had a more updated image.
I can't get it to move.
Okay.
Yeah, it's much bigger now.
All right, so that's not there any longer, that's, okay. Any other questions from the board? All right, if you could just give us your answers to the questions?
Absolutely.
Like you've written. The need for a variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not the general conditions of the neighborhood.
Yes, it is. Would you like me to read these out loud to the record?
Yes, please.
Sure. Uh, yes, it is. The current location of the cottage, as well as the long narrow building envelope, would require some type of relief from the standards if they are to expand and use their property similar to Alapunzner, nearly half of the existing structures, structure index currently sit over the setback lines. Therefore, any type of vertical expansion would involve a variance. While there are other lots on Pine Point with similar situations, I would not consider it to be a general condition.
Okay, thank you. The granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of a budding properties?
No, it will not. In fact, I believe that approving this request would allow this property to enhance the character of the neighborhood, as well as improve the market value of the neighborhood in a few ways. It would allow the cottage to be converted to a year-round home similar to most other budding properties. It would allow the owner to invest in the property, knowing that they can use it long-term with their annual. The current cottage is in disrepair, and the size and design of the home would certainly increase the property value of adjacent houses.
The practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or a prior owner?
No, it is not. This hardship and the need for this relief is due to the geometry of the lot that was created long before zoning standards. By current zoning, the location of the current structure, as well as the overall building level, is such an odd shape that nearly any redevelopment of this property requires some piece of relief from the zoning standards. The building window tapers down from twenty-five foot nine on the west side to six feet on the east side, therefore creating a very odd shape to cover this.
Okay, no other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance?
Well, no, not that I've been able to find, after many, many, many tries. I spent over a year working with the owner on various designs to minimize the need for relief. However, all of our efforts kept coming back to the designs submitted. I tried to design a rendition of some type of tower element that only falls within the allowable building window and leaves the front of the existing cottage, a portion over the front setback line, in place, and we would not need any type of variance. Some of you may know, I've done that many times. To be honest, this could be done, but it would be difficult to design this type of structure and have it fit in architecturally with the character of the neighborhood. That type of design would certainly stick out as something that was forceful in the neighborhood, rather than integrating to it.
The granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly, nearly in conformance with surrounding properties? I think you've kind of addressed that already.
And, yes, I believe will. The variance will allow us to have the house be more centered on the lot, rather than tucked to the side. The driveway would be relocated to the other side of the home, creating a pattern of driveways on that side of the road. The massing of the home would fit in well with existing adjacent homes.
The granting of a variance will not have an unreasonably adverse effect on the natural environment?
No, it will not. This variance would allow the owner to hopefully provide more permanent services on the lot by removal of a large parking area, even some of the decks. Otherwise, the property would be used in the same manner as it is currently used.
And the property is not located in whole or in part within a shoreline area as defined thirty-eight M R S A, four thirty-five, or flood zone as defined in the town of Scarborough's flood plan management ordinance?
Nope, according to the co-officer and our research on it, no portion of this lot is located in a shoreline zone or flood.
Thank you. Mr. Longstaff, do you have anything to add?
Only that this is, as Mr. Richmond said, we were trying to see if we could make this work as a limited reduction of yard size. It's a little bit simpler to go for just a fraction over. He tried twisting my arm, I didn't cave in, I said, practical difficulty is how we have to do it, and so this is the proper vehicle for them to, to apply for the, the type of improvements that they want. It's not in a special flood hazard area, it's not in the shoreline overlay district, but it is in the back dune, and that is why they applied for and received a permit by rule from the Department of Environmental Protection. Beyond that, again, it's up to the board to determine if they met the tests for these criteria and make a decision based on the information provided.
Thank you. Do you have any, anybody from the public that wishes to comment? Seeing none, close the public hearing, back to the board for questions.
Didn't we receive a letter?
We did.
Yes, please. Just anyone?
Sure. The chair has asked me to read this in. This is from Charlotte.
This is from Charlotte Pryor and Randy Harrison at 29 Driftwood Lane. It says, "We live at 29 Driftwood Lane, opposite the Gresk, Gresk property at 28 Driftwood Lane. Assuming the documents we have received from the planning office represent the proposed project accurately, we have only one objection to the practical difficulty variance appeal under consideration. We ask that the proposed deck on the east side of the structure either be omitted, or if there is not adequate access to the rear deck through the rear of the structure, the width of the deck on the east side of the structure be limited to the minimum width necessary to step outside and walk left to access the rear deck. It is difficult to identify the proposed width of that east deck from the few drawings we have seen, measurements are not offered. However, it seems clear that the proposed deck projects eastward substantially and beyond the setback guideline. If our suggestion is accepted, it appears that substantial deck space would remain on the second floor rear and third floor of the structure. That said, we wish the Gresks good luck with the project. Thank you for your consideration."
Have you had any discussions with that party?
No. I received that letter today.
Okay.
I guess my only comment, and Mrs. Gresk can stop me if she'd like to, they're great neighbors, to all their neighbors, and we have support, we have neighbors here. I believe that the portion in question is this portion of the new proposed deck right here, my understanding? I, I guess just to be clear, and I'm not trying to be a hard guy about it, this, this portion, this particular portion, fits within the setback. So, as long as we have proper lot coverage, which we do from a DEP perspective, and I'll work, I can work with the town on, the town's perspective, I mean, as, as long as we're within this purple setback, this, this can go accordion style.
What about that slate jet out that does not fit in the setback?
Yep, excellent question. The only reason we're trying to do this is, I don't want to say it's really a convenience, it was actually more of a safety element that came up, so that if you're coming up this side of the door in the house, you could access the back. The only stair off this upper deck, and you get this is 10 feet up in the air, is off this side. So we wanted to be able to provide people just enough to get to it and connect down off the ground, get, get down off the upper deck.
So there's no way to bring that back within the purple?
Well...
Without creating a safety hazard for walking or firemen or...
We, we, not in an efficient way, no. We tried. And the, I believe that the letter came from folks across the street, which would be here, so to be honest, even if this was not there, it would not affect that view across the street at all.
Looks like technically you were further down before, or am I seeing that wrong?
Well, the, the deck right now is much, much deeper.
But it looks like it comes down, if you're talking about the across the street neighbors, it looks like it comes down more.
Correct, correct. It goes to the east more.
So you have already brought that in?
Correct.
But Mr. Chairman, again, it is in the buildable window.
Right, yeah, I was just questioning. Except for that back piece, that's the only thing I was looking at.
And I'd like to make a comment, and it's, it's nice to hear that you are good neighbors, and I'm sure you'd be willing to work with them and to address any problems that they would have, but with regard, with regards to the neighbor who wrote in, as we've stated before in the past, you're not entitled to review as far as you're, you know, if something's obstructing your property, especially if it's across the street. And I see, based on the information provided here, that the applicant, and I guess, speaking to point number four, working over for a year, multiple designs, has explained, at least to my satisfaction, that the applicant has explored many options. Other options would potentially jeopardize the other requirements of this practical difficulty application, i.e. for me, it's always aesthetics and character of the neighborhood, and you would end up putting a house in there that wouldn't match anything, that neighbors would, it'd be more of an eyesore, rather, thinking of the accordion style or the cheesecake design that would have to fit in on that buildable lot.
Yeah, and I would think the height, if a neighbor was going to address anything, they would have addressed the height, and no one actually addressed the height.
Right.
From how far it's going up.
Right, and another, that's another point as well, all the surrounding homes are of that scale. So I, me personally, I don't see any significant issues with this application.
Any other questions from the board?
To the point of Mr. Hebert, could you discuss the options that you looked at under item four, for review of different designs?
Certainly discuss, unfortunately visually, not much help.
I, I know you showed a sketch of one.
Yeah. That was actually probably about halfway down the field, to be honest with you. The only, the only approach that I was trying was basically making this rectangle that's within the purple setback line as long as possible, and pulling it up as high as possible to get the bedrooms and living spaces that they're, that they need. Again, could I do it? Absolutely. Can't lie, I can go up to 35 feet, but architecturally speaking, it was a really big wall with lots of windows in it, and I was having a really hard time getting my spaces in there to work inside with any type of a hallway, the spaces became so small, like feet and a half feet-ish. But back to the, the, the character, I'm a Pinepoint guy, I could, absolutely could not get it to work from a scale, from a design perspective at all. Couldn't develop a roof that would really go along well.
And was there, was there any other alternative you looked besides just that envelope that's inside the purple?
Well, yes, in fact, that's, one rendition is similar to this, the, the smaller rendition here.
Yeah.
Where I had it more on the left-hand side than the right.
Yeah.
Yeah, I worked for a couple of months in different scenarios, trying to keep it here. Threw my hands up, came in crying again, and said, you know, "If, if I can go over this, also its possibilities," then it really opened things up. But for seem to stay within this, I, I struggled and struggled and struggled, and finally, basically said, "I, I can't, can't come up with something that's good."
So it was multiple attempts with trying to get that center portion raised, and try and make it work with a small width?
Yes. Months, months of effort, continuously, but often on.
Now, to further go over that question, with the properties around, if you had brought that to 35 feet, how much more would it probably stick out to the other properties, even the one that was just redone in the back? Would that make it substantially higher?
Well, yes and no.
And kind of an odd design?
So the, I guess from my perspective, the, the height of the proposed is high, similar to the one beside it, to the, to the east, similar to the one behind it, but it's, actually I'll use a bit more. Thank you, sir.
Need more tape?
Need a new whistle.
You know, this right here is a high structure, 35 feet, and there's many, many houses on Pinepoint that almost reach that, 35, 35 feet is the limit. My opinion is, if it's 35 feet in a limited portion, that's, that's a great character, that provides style. The problem that I was having with the other one, it is, if it's 35 feet the whole way, because you need that space, and you only, and you have to jam it within the purple setback lines, it, it's a wall, it's, it's way too big, it's way too much roof.
Would the garage have even fit in if you didn't, if you were trying to get it in the...
Not depth-wise, no. I, the only way to get a, a garage that's even reasonable, other than for a mini, would be to come in from the side, and we'd be adding a tremendous amount of driveway and permanent services to do that. I actually had a scenario with that, now that you mentioned it.
Any other questions?
The existing paved driveway, is that being removed?
Yes, sir.
Any other questions? Seeing none, should we go through the questions? Just go over it for the board and vote yes or no? "Need for the variance is due to the unique circumstances of the property and not to the general condition of, in the neighborhood." I'll start down at this end.
I mean, I think the appellant's done a good job showing the narrow building envelope that they're working with here, and I think they've done a good job that...
I agree with their statement.
Yeah, I agree as well, it's, it's the unique circumstances of this buildable envelope that's requiring them bring them here.
Mr. Maroon?
Looks like other houses don't have that problem in the area. And that'd be the definition, so I would agree with that.
Yeah, I agree with Mr. Maroon, it looks like the two properties that are backed up to it have a similar issue, but I wouldn't say it's the general character of the neighborhood.
And I would agree, I think the lot's very restrictive. All those in favor of one being met? Unanimous? "Granting of a variance will not produce an undesirable change to the character of the neighborhood and will not have an unreasonably detrimental effect on either the use or fair market value of abutting properties." We'll start down here again.
Uh, to be honest, I'm actually familiar with the property, and I think at this point it's kind of a sore thrum, thumb, in that sort of neighborhood. I think it'll be nice to, it'll just improve the character of the neighborhood and obviously the value of all the properties surrounding it.
I agree, it's going to, uh, it's going to match other properties in, in the neighborhood and that's it.
I agree, I believe the applicant has explained, to, to my satisfaction, that any alternative would be a complicated building design that would not meet the character of the surrounding homes.
Mr. Maroon?
I agree, the massing of the structure as shown by the applicant does a good job of not overdoing, pushing the envelope and making it too big, so the varied heights of the roof also create a mass that's in character with the neighborhood.
I agree, as per, you presented to us, you looked at different ways, and you really didn't want to make it out of character in the neighborhood, so I appreciate that, because we have some people that come in that will not make it in the character of the neighborhood. "Practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or..."
You can hold on that, Mr. Chair.
Oh, sorry, yep. All in favor, sorry. It's this new stuff. Let's see, we'll be on four. Three. "The practical difficulty is not the result of an action taken by the applicant or the prior owner."
No, I mean, the original structure was built before the zoning standards, and they're just trying to now deal with what's there and expand on it.
It's caused by the zoning.
I agree with Ms. Shoup, and I have nothing to add.
I agree, the abutting properties, the backside of the property, those two look like they have the same problem, and it is not an owner issue, it is the layout of the way these properties were detailed.
I would agree with all the comments of the board. All in favor of three? Unanimous? Four. "No other feasible alternative is available to the applicant except a variance."
Well, I think the applicant has fully gone through and showed to us that, you know, there really is no feasible alternative for this lot and what their constraints that they're dealing with.
I agree with Ms. Shoup.
I'll reiterate briefly what I said earlier, I believe they meant this, and they've explained to my dissatisfaction, that they've explored many options and they've gone through tonight, and other options for a building design would, I think, jeopardize requirements of this practical difficulty application with regards to character of the neighborhood.
I think one of the pluses is, Evanard mentioned, is it taking off that back shed or the front, the front porch there at the deck, which kind of balances out a little bit of the other side, side, and gets important.
Pulling it in from the front property?
Right. Taking a good cut off, I think that is a legitimate benefit.
I believe the applicant has shown the burden of proof that they've reviewed all the designs possible.
Normally, this is the toughest one for me, and I normally am a no on this, but it looks like you've run your great lengths on Mr. Longstaff to try to make it happen, and you're really trying to keep it within the envelope, which I really appreciate, because you're not really going out of that border very much from where it was before, so we appreciate that. All in favor of four? Unanimous? "The granting of a variance will result in bringing the applicant's property more nearly, nearly in conformance with surrounding properties."
Yes, I mean, I think the applicant has shown that, you know, they're trying to be more stylistic in regards to the properties around them, and trying to center it in the property, and that they're trying to work with as much of the envelope as they can.
I think the, the expansion that they're proposing here coincides very nicely with the other properties, as you can see in the pictures.
I agree, based on, and I appreciate the Google image as part of the packet, based on the size and scale of the surrounding homes and the neighbors, that this wouldn't, this would not be out of place.
I agree as well, there are at least four or five properties that come up two and a half stories in the, in the abutting positions.
Yeah, I had to appreciate the Google image, because I was looking at the one behind, and I appreciate you telling us that that has been changed, because that was my one concern. That one was kind of out of place, because it was smaller, but most of the others are. All in favor of five? Unanimous? Six. "Granting of a variance will not have an unreasonable adverse effect in the natural environment."
I believe they've shown that it will not.
Yeah, it, it's not going to happen any... You know, I do have one, one question. You said that you heard from DEP?
Correct.
What'd you ask DEP for?
This lot is located in a rear dune, as most of Pinepoint is, so we're required to get a permit from the DEP as well as the setback.
Which you've already obtained, right? You've already obtained that.
So number, question number seven is not...
Mr. Longstaff addressed that, it's not going to be an option.
It's not in the shoreline zone.
Right.
Uh, and that spoke to my point, that they've already engaged the DEP and they've given their blessing on this, so I see no issues with point number seven.
Six. Agree.
It was six.
Sorry, six.
That's okay. All in favor of six being met? Unanimous? Number seven. We've already addressed it, property's not in, located in whole or part within the shoreline area, did we need to address the dune? No, okay. So I would see number seven as... One thing I didn't ask you, normally I would ask you, on the current structure, what is it like as far as, like, the structure itself for the electrical and the plumbing and the clearances for safety reasons? Is it outdated, a lot of those, because that's...
Oh, yes. There it is. What can I say? They have not done any demolition, so it's hard to have X-ray vision before, you know, through the walls. It's two-by-four construction, limited, if any, insulation, from what I understand, you know, it's a seasonal cottage now, we shut the water off, close it down. Ninety-nine percent of this same builder has built up, although the projects on Pinepoint have been recently renovated, and all the wiring is bad.
Okay.
All the wiring, and so I'm suspect of what the other five ones, what's they taking in.
And other safety concerns, like access in and out and...
I believe the bones are good, the foundation, I believe, is still here, the walls, we have the structural members holding the second course, I think it'd be good. I'm very suspect of the, the wiring again.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions?
Mr. Chair, I would like to go on record.
Yes.
I know one of the abutters had an issue with the right side deck, and based on what I see, the size and the massing of that deck, I don't think it, you took advantage of us, or, and I don't think it is significant, so I would disagree with their position, and I agree with the size of that deck on the right-hand side.
Died with that. If you're looking from where that person was talking, it's at the backside of, it would make a bitter difference if that deck were two feet deeper, the depth has no, no impact. So it wouldn't make any difference at all.
And just about all of it's in conformance, except that one little jut out, which you've explained the reasoning for.
Yeah, I, I appreciate you bringing that up, Mr. Loyzel, just from an egress standpoint that satisfies any concern that I have with that.
So motion for the board?
Move to approve appeal number 2623 as presented.
Second. All those in favor?
No discussion.
Alright. Any discussion?
One comment, I'd like to thank the applicant for, and you know, people make fun of colors on drawings, but I certainly really appreciate it, especially looking at it from a distance. It's not, and we've had previous applications come in as well, it's nice to have the existing, the proposed, the boundary lines laid out in a nice color-coordinated pattern, makes things much more efficient.
If we could everybody use the same colors now?
Yeah. Purple, green, and orange, yeah. We can see those.
That's why I'm saying this on the record for the millions of viewers out there, as well as for, for, for Mr. Longstaff to ta- well as for Mr. Longstaff to take for future recommendations to anyone else.
Are you saying you didn't like my highlighted colors on my drawing?
I didn't say anything about that, actually.
I second that.
That's my, that's my comment, so thank you.
Yours more into this detail. So I guess we need to vote again. All those in favor? Unanimous? More questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right.
Should we hold our documentation for the table?
Northeast?
Just put everything back in your black files, and I'll go through and pull out what you need to keep, okay?
Promise I'll bring more tape next time, Mike?
I'll bring our easel. He actually has an easel, but I'll bring ours.
Any zoning board comments this evening?
I have a comment.
Yes.
First, congratulations Leroy. I think you did a great job tonight as chair. And I'd also like to thank Mr. Maroon. You've been the chair for-
Ever.
The three, I think, three years I've been on the board, and I really appreciate all you've done. So thank you, Mr. Maroon.
I was trying to continue that. Any other comments?
You already did a great job.
Yeah, well, thank you.
And also add congratulations to James Welby, Vice Chair. So it's nice to see new blood.
Let's see if it's good blood.
We don't have to drink moxie, though. That's all I'm concerned with.
It's a requirement of the chair.
Chair has to learn moxie. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
I would just like to, if I could, because Mr. Maroon was always good. He always asked me if I had anything to say. Probably a big mistake, but he did it anyway. And I would like to also thank Mr. Maroon for his years of service. He's also been the chair, except for one year, he's been the chair for my entire tenure here in town, and I think he's done a wonderful job. And I do, I thank him, and I do also agree that I think it is good to have new blood. So congratulations and good luck, and certainly, I think Mark would be a good resource for you. I'll try to be a good resource for you. Jay is also there. So any help we can give you, any extra coaching or anything that you feel you need, we can certainly look for those training opportunities if they're out there from MMA or whatever. But looking forward to a successful year ahead. And don't forget, we'll be back here again next year, and the process will continue. Maybe by that time, there'll be additional new blood. Maybe Leroy will be sick of me and not being chair.
I might only have one year left on my term.
So it may be mandatory that we have. But anyway, thank you all. I really do appreciate the, I appreciate the job you've done. I appreciate the job you will do and the help that I'm sure you will provide for him, because you'll probably have to start most of the meetings since he's five minutes late.
That's right. Hey, I get to lead the pleasure of Alesians. That's all I have to do. Yeah, that's fine.
Yes, Mr. Maroon did a great job in his, in his tenure, and Mr. Loyzelle backing up. You guys did a great job. I was kind of trying to change the vote a little bit, but you guys kind of threw that one at me-
Thank you.
-when everybody voted yes.
Sorry, not sorry.
Somebody had a motion. You have a motion to adjourn.
Second.
I've got just one item. There's a letter here from Walter Wilson about getting an extension on a-
That wasn't supposed to be in these papers.
No, I don't know where that-
That's for next month.
Okay, so just hold on to it.
Mr. Blaze, you never saw it.
Oh, quick question before you adjourn. Did we need to ask if there were any letters for the repeal before the last one? Or if that was an administrative appeal, did we have to fill out primary letters?
On the Satlack appeal?
Yeah, because I didn't ask if there were any letters sent to the town.
There was just the letter from the attorney, correct?
Which we have in record.
Yeah. I didn't have any others.
Okay. I just wanted to make sure we covered the bases.
I'm sorry, we did. We had one, just comments from Jim Netto, and you all should have received that.
Yeah, that was a, that was a cert, the person who performed the property survey, the dominacs, the owners of Four East Grand, provided that just the other day to me, but-
But we don't have to read it.
No.
It's in the record. It's here in the file. I think it was funny.
I wanted to make sure we covered the bases on that. Thank you all. I appreciate all your help.
We haven't voted on it yet.
I know, because everybody keeps having complaints.
We have a motion to adjourn. Second, the motion.
All in favor?
Unanimous. We can adjourn.